We're going to call being to order and if we could have a pledge of allegiance, Mr. Gentry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's more personal privilege, our chairman is not feeling well tonight, so that's why he's not here and you're looking at me. But I have a moment of silence for all the people here and in our world who are suffering. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, sir. We need to amend the agenda for a couple of items.
Okay.
The first one, we need to add item 11G, which is the Spring Creek Interior Building Modification and Renovation Bid Consideration. And we also will need to add 11H, which will be consideration and discussions for guidelines regarding enforcement of certain planning zoning issues. Does that sufficiently do that for you, Mike?
Yeah, I think just the point of clarity is to add that we have some discussion about junk ordinance.
Correct.
How we identify and enforce it.
With those amendments, can I get approval for the agenda?
I move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Agenda stands approved. Our next item is the approval of July 12, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Mr. Webber, I'm looking to you.
Mr. Chair, having reviewed these minutes when they were emailed out to us with our information packet for the meeting, I find them to be completely in order and I would move that they be approved as submitted.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Thank you. That brings us to public comment. Our first speaker is Connie Muller. Good evening.
Hello, y'all. Good evening. I'm short. Stand over here.
You're fine.
Stand over there on the other side because the microphone.
The microphone. Alright, that's good. And I am here on behalf of the event that was held in Marshall this past weekend and it is Cycle NC. Several years ago came to us and said, hey, we want to do this event, maybe in Marshall. And we want to tent camp on the island and would that be possible? And I came to you and asked and you said yes. Town of Marshall said yes and then they turned us down and went somewhere else. I was very upset. I persisted. I went to several events. I got some pictures. I understood what they were looking for. Came back and said, I think this would be really good for our community. And they approved us for this year and this past weekend we hosted 291 cyclists from 19 states. There were, 63% were male, which is better than what we get with Hot Dogget, which is about 80% male to female. And the oldest rider was 81. The youngest was 10. The other thing that's fun is that they, the average age is 61. These people were not racing. They were riding and they were here to enjoy the community. I know that the downtown Marshall businesses as well as Hot Springs and Mars Hill all appreciated having the extra traffic. People coming in and spending money. And if you think about it, if each person spent 100 bucks, that would be $29,100 that just came into our community by allowing this kind of event. It really turned out well. They were a great group of people and I want to say thank you for y'all allowing this to begin with and giving your thumbs up to allow that group to come in. I've already had people ask me, will they come back? And the answer is maybe. We would have to apply again, but they like to go to different places each year. It was a great opportunity. And I will say one other thing. I saw Matt yesterday and he said he didn't get any complaints, so it must have gone well. So I thought that was really good and I appreciated you saying that. So I just wanted to say thank you and it was really a wonderful event.
Thank you, Connie.
Thanks, Connie.
Thank you. Next on our list is Ken Kasuba. Ken, did I get it right?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
How y'all feeling this evening?
Good, sir.
Hope you are good.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you, everybody, and Brad for the update on the moratorium. That was actually the first item on my list to talk about because a few of you have told us, you know, our job is to hold you all accountable for making sure this is going forward. So thank you for taking care of that. At the planning and zoning meeting, there was something said, I think, by attorney John Noor. And if you could check notes to just double check that. He said that you could add verbiage to the documents that say, that include a retroactive rights removal to add to the moratorium when we're working on the moratorium for the ordinances for the sound. He said it can be added because we were talking about the biomass facility at the time for accountability removal of rights. He says it's not an easy thing to do, but it can be added. So if you could all research that and check into that to see if we can add that in your working meetings, I'd really appreciate that. I'm sorry? It was a retroactive rights removal. Some, I'm not exactly sure the verbiage he said because I don't have a tape of that meeting and it's not recorded. So I tried to check my notes, but I couldn't understand my own writing. And the reason I asked that is because, you know, we're currently dealing with violations and noise, you know, issues and attitude. Whether it's perceived or whether it's an actual attitude, but it's like a child who does not get their way and just doesn't like to be told no. We had an issue this, yesterday where we told the owners of Paint Rock Farm not to come on our property without an appointment. That's trespassing. But they violated that. They came up to our property. They came up to our neighbor's property to do their professional sound measurements. The only people we saw on our security cameras were the owners. And their reply was that they did not realize that we could potentially cause any issues by simply being on your road. We carefully parked. Well, first of all, there's no parking. Second of all, by simply being on is trespassing. It's private property. So they assumed that there was not an issue being on Rebel Drive, assuming, again, it's trespassing. They also went up to our neighbor's house. They opened their gate, was walking around her house, set off her security cameras. She messaged us, says she's going to call the cops. Later on, she realized who it was and wasn't as much of an issue for her, but still, going on somebody's property without permission is trespassing. And as far as a professional sound check, like I said, it was only the owners of Paint Rock Farm that we saw. They said this is work in progress, that the last two weddings did not have an issue based on sound. We disagree. We called 911 on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Our next speaker is Clay Honeycutt. Good evening, Mr. Honeycutt.
Good.
Good, Clay.
No complaints from me tonight. I just wanted to thank Brad and his staff for getting on that issue we have with the 911 addresses. They dealt with it quickly. Also, I want to keep blowing the environmental health funding horn. Keep them in your thoughts. They're doing all they can, but they need some help. So that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Clay.
Our next speaker is Todd McCormick. Evening, sir. Hey.
Hello, Todd. Mine's a little bit different. I have got some things that I have wrote down, but heard that commissioners had let some letters and stuff go out to people who apparently was in a violation of an eyesore. I guess you would call it on their property. And so got to thinking about this and I just wanted to remind you that according to the U.S. Constitution, we the people are free. And this comes from Ronald Reagan, whether you liked him or you didn't. But we the people tell the government what to do. So, I mean, you got your own property. You've got things going on in your own property. Some people may consider it an eyesore, but it may be your livelihood. So I don't think the government should be able to tell those individuals what they can do on their own property. Now, if it affects somebody else, if you've got a problem running downhill that causes issues. But the other, government is a vehicle and we the people are the ones that are driving that vehicle. Tell it where to go, the rate that it goes, and when we arrive at the destination. So as the government expands, our liberties contract. So with these kind of things going on, through more and more rules, more and more regulations, the government takes more of our money, more of our options, and more of our freedoms. And according to the Constitution, we are free. Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Our next speaker is Jay Silver.
Evening, sir.
Hey, Jay.
How are you?
We're good.
Most of you know me, some of you don't. I'm going to go a little further than Todd Glent. I mean, this ordinance and zoning and all this, most of this has been in Madison County for years. I mean, I've got junk, as you call it. It's not junk to me. Norse's daddy had junk. It wasn't junk to him. We all have some kind of junk that's junk to somebody else, but it's not to us. I mean, it's our livelihoods. It's what we've done for years. And I go back generations in this county, not just moved in here. And we don't like to be told and make rules. It's what we can do on our property. There's enough rules and regulations as it is. We need to stop some of it. Our boards that you fixed to talk about, the zoning board, planning boards, I know nothing about it. But I think we've got some real good people on those boards. And we need to keep them on those boards. You need common sense people. And I mean, that's, that's basically what everybody wants. But then we got people that wants to get in everybody else's business and it's none of their business. So on the zoning and the enforcement of this, I think you need to really sit down and think before you do anything. And I mean, talk to some of us, you know, we generally don't get out. We don't have time to get out. We've got to work. And what we've got there is what we work with. I thank yous for listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
That is our last speaker. You're welcome. That takes us to number four. Marissa Cornell, executive director and Dr. Banks Coordinator, Madison Yancey Drug Court. Drug Treatment Court. Good evening.
Good evening, Marissa.
Good afternoon. All right. Just want to thank you from the very beginning, just to, for allowing us to come. Unfortunately, Marissa could not be here, so you've got me. Anyway, what we wanted to talk about was just to inform the board about Drug Court with, there's been so many questions about the opioid funding coming in and what Drug Court does and what it doesn't do. So we've just got a little presentation. Okay, which button do I?
It's always a little trouble there.
Which one? Oh, I thought it was me.
No, you're good. I think it died. I'll click it for you.
Oh, okay.
Just give me a heads up.
Okay. Mediation and Restorative Justice Center is a, I'm sorry, let me start all over again. 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization located in Boone. Serves western North Carolina, the counties of western North Carolina. And of course, they have programs such as the Drug Court, Mediation, Juvenile, and some other programs that they serve in other counties. Why, why Treatment Court? It's very clear. It fosters recovery and saves lives. As you all know, there's an epidemic, fentanyl. We've got ODs, you know, we've got overdose just every day and it just, and it just keeps getting worse. And you'll see that there's almost 21 million Americans have at least one addiction, but only 10% actually get those addressed and receive treatment. Treatment Courts are the single most successful intervention in our nation's history for assisting people with substance use and mental health disorders to exit the justice, the justice system. I'm having a hard time seeing guys. And into lives of recovery and stability. Fortunately, it's getting old. Drug Treatment Court is a supervised, very structured, post-sentence treatment program for nonviolent offenders struggling with addiction that helps them establish and maintain a sober and productive life. And involved in that would be the judicial accountability, community supervision, behavioral health treatment, case management, and of course, regular drug screens. Is available in every county in the 24th Judicial District. Of course, Madison and Yancey. And I serve both Madison and Yancey. After operating Drug Treatment Court, after operating in Avery and Watauga Counties for over a decade, the 24th Judicial District expanded in late 2018 to establish drug treatment programs in Madison, Mitchell, and Yancey. And MRJC provides coordination for those drug treatment centers. MRJC provides for the court judges and then, of course, with my salary. The 24th Judicial Drug Treatment Courts make up nearly 20% of all North Carolina counties that offer drug treatment courts. We are honored to work alongside our partners such as attorneys, staff of the 35th Prosecutorial District, the 25th District Court Judges, probation officers, treatment providers, including Daymark and RHA. Daymark would serve, does not serve Madison or Yancey, but serves the other counties. We have RHA, defense attorneys. We have local law enforcement on every team and many other community agencies. Let's look at Madison County Drug Treatment Court. It's comprised of four levels. And as I say, structured, and I mean really, really structured. Lasts from anywhere from a year and a half to two years to successfully complete the program. And these folks will spend up to, could possibly spend up to 20 hours a week with these activities at the very beginning in the first level. And, and everybody's different. With regular meetings with their case manager, their probation officer and treatment groups. RHA alone, level one, they spend three hours a day for three days a week. So that's nine hours. Very difficult to work and, and receive treatment at the same time. In level one, extremely hard to work. Attendance, we have court bi-weekly. And we also ask them to attend three hours a week of a AA meeting or an NA meeting. And that's documented and then they, they bring that to court. And of course, random drug screening. That's the key, random. Eligibility criteria, of course, be a Madison County resident, be alcohol or substance dependent, be charged with a felony offense, not be convicted of a violent offense. That's very important, not be convicted of a violent offense and be willing to participate. You know, when they come in, in the very first of the program, you know, they may, you know, I don't really want to, but as the days progress and they start seeing, hey, you know, maybe I can do this. They're more willing to participate and they buy into the program. We take a team approach. Every client who comes in and enters our program has a different program. We have the presiding judge, which is usually Judge McIntyre, although that, that can change. I'm the Drug Treatment Court Coordinator, Probation Officer, which is Melissa Barton-Litt. The treatment provider, Jessica, with RHA. District Attorney, John Honeycutt. Defense Attorney, Jenna Blackwell. And we have someone, as I said, for law enforcement liaison. Chris Potter. As I said, treatment plans are case by case basis. They have access to inpatient and outpatient behavioral health treatment, depends on the client. They may have inpatient, they come out and they may need to go back to inpatient. Just depends on the client. They get medical services that they've not had in years or ever had. 12-step, as I mentioned earlier, and other community recovery support groups like AA and NA. We encourage them to get, well, that's a requirement, to get involved early. We require three hours a week in the beginning and then that moves to four hours a week toward the phase four. Fortunately, we have a great working relationship with AB Tech. Dr. Gossett just happens to be here. Working with GED and Continuing Education Services. Of course, employment referrals later on. And then community services referrals. We focus on honesty. When you come into the program, you may not always test positive or test negative, may not always. We, that's what we strive for, but what we want is honesty. If you've used, you know, if there's been a stressor in your life during this past week, tell us. You know, be honest, own up to it. We want attendance. We want you to be on time. We expect you to go to treatment. And we focus on clean time. We have a certain number of days that in order to level up to the next level, you must have 45 days of consecutive clean time. That's in level one. We also encouraging, encourage paying court fees. Following all the rules and we look at stability. These folks have absolutely no stability in their life. And one of the things particularly toward, you know, we work on this in every level about how you deal with stressors. But toward the end is planning for the future. What happens in the future and, and how can I work today to improve that? We have rewards and unfortunately, we have sanctions, rewards such as judicial praise. And guys, you know, when I, when I first typed that, I thought, well, you know, folks aren't going to think that's a big deal. But if you drop down to sanctions for judicial admonishment, trust me, when you get that and then you get the judicial praise, oh, it is wonderful. And they live, really love it. We have Madison County businesses who will give us gift certificates, candy, certificates of praise for having 100 days sober. Anything that we can thank them for and, and recognize accomplishments. These folks tell me, when I say, hey, you're doing a great job, I've never been told that in my life. And I believe them. You know, they've never had anybody in their life, in their corner, who says you can do this and I'm supporting you. Donated items such as socks, cleaning supplies, picture frames, and of course, excused early from court. Sanctions, as I mentioned earlier, we will occasionally ask someone to do an essay or journaling. That's for reflection. Why did you, why did you use, what caused you to use, what were those triggers? We do have curfew or electronic house arrest, community service, and unfortunately, expulsion. You know, sometimes just not right, a right fit. And so sometimes we have to say goodbye to folks. COVID has really hurt us. From '21 to '22, we served 16 individuals. And from the beginning of 2000, not the beginning, but the December of 18, we've had a total of 50 clients in the program. We've had 10 graduates. That sounds like a very low number, but when you look at other programs, it's very comparable. Matter of fact, we have more graduates in our counties than the other counties do in our district. Graduation Recovery Program. We celebrate. We actually have a party in the courtroom. You know, when they graduate, I mean, we bring cake. You know, we, we do it right. They, they want to reflect on their accomplishments. They've come a long way. They've made such progress in a year's time. We, we never want them to forget where they were. We just, because you can't forget, you have to build on that. But you also want to remember how far you've come. Look at their recovery journey, goals and plans for the future. Again, sitting down and looking at possible future challenges and what they might do to prevent a relapse. That's the key. What can you do to prevent a relapse? And if, if I might say, we have a young man who's graduating in September and I'm, I will send you all an invitation. And as I was looking at my list today, we, we currently have nine. And I am very proud to say four, at least today, are doing amazing. I cannot tell you how proud I am of these folks. They have worked so hard. We actually have two individuals who've, they've never tested positive. They came into the program, they said, hey, and they're almost in level three. I'm going to do this. You know, I'm going to get my life on track. So I just wanted to come and say thank you. I know the Board of Commissioners supports us. It is a big deal. And we hope, you know, we can make a difference in people's lives. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Sir.
I would ask each one of you, if you ever get an opportunity to go to one of these graduations and anybody that is in the audience here from Madison County, it is an amazing thing to see in the courtroom. These are folks that just as soon could be your friend, could be your relative, could be, these are from Madison County who are drug addicts. They get into the program because they've usually committed a crime to feed their addiction. They're not hardened criminals. They're addicts. They are treated through Drug Court. The benefit they get is to get their charges dismissed if they complete this program. I couldn't do this and probably 99% of you all could. You've got Judge McIntyre, who is tough as nails. You've got law enforcement officers. You've got probation officers. I couldn't believe what these people have to do. They have to work. They have to take tests. They have to learn to be honest. If they backslide, what the judge wants them to do is be honest so they can beat this addiction. He may put them in jail. He might make them write an essay. But it's an amazing program. You don't get a little piece of paper for going to community service. 18 months to 24 months is how long it takes to complete this program. And I'm telling you, the first one I met to, I cried in the courtroom because one of the folks who went through it got up and gave his testimony. He had two little kids and his wife there in the family with him. He worked at Altech. He got a job. He went to church. He rented a home. His little kids were dressed up there. And the amazing thing about it is that you could look at your county commissioners and you could say, we put $30,000 into that program and it's better than sending anybody off to one of these spas to off to one of these spas to go to drug treatment because it happened in your county. You know, if it's the kind of program that you were proud of to be in Madison County because it helps your folks, these folks here brought that program to Madison County and Yancey County in 2018. Judge McIntyre started this program in this district. Big counties don't. You know, we go to conferences and they talk about this district that's having these things. I know Commissioner Garrison is well versed in this program because the Sheriff's Department is part of it. You know, it's, it's not like these folks aren't looked at, you know, they're not petted, you know, Sheriff's Department just didn't put these folks in jail. But you know, here's the good part about it. You're not putting these folks in jail and having them sit there without getting any treatment for their addiction and then you got to pay for putting them in jail. Okay? You're rehabilitating them with a small amount of money. And I don't know if these folks will listen, but as we get this opioid money in, this is the kind of program that you want that money to go to so that you can expand it and help your Madison County residents to, to come out of this. And when they come out of this, you know, they're, they're clean.
They're clean.
They're ready to go. It, it is an absolute amazing program that you're running.
Well, I'll, I'll echo Donnie's comments 100%. It is a great program. Want to see it continue and possibly be expanded with the opioid money that we have. I went to the very first graduation that we had here in Madison County and to see those folks and hear the stories where they started, where they came from, what, for lack of a better term, what hell they went through before they got there. It was a very touching event and, and look forward to seeing many more of it.
Thank you. September the 20th is our graduation.
You know, I haven't been to the graduation, but I've done some research, I've published on the drug courts and it's been, it's been interesting to see how successful they are in getting people back into society. And I think that, I think that's important. All these points are important, but it, it works.
It works.
I think that, I think that's really important to say is this, this is not, this is not daycare. This is a program that has a good, successful track record and we don't have another program that has that type of a track record.
No, no. And as, as Donnie said, you can't leave a graduation without tears. You, you just, you just can't.
I want to pitch something on this. I'm going to use Teresa, my apologies.
Uh-oh.
It's a springboard because there's been a lot of discussion about Plan A and Plan B and the state grant funding for drug treatment, whether we do MAP in jail or we do it out of jail, if we have needle exchange programs. I want to kind of preface this on, I served on drug court, the first one in this county. And Ted McIntyre, Judge McIntyre is a very godly man who teaches Sunday School and he loves the people that's, that walk in on that drug court. You will not have a better person to love them, to nurture them, to admonish them.
Exactly.
He does it all. He is perfect judge for Madison County to have sitting on that drug court. If you show up and you lie, that's a problem. If you show up and you test positive, we expect that.
Yeah.
For a degree. If you keep showing up and you keep testing positive, then he looks over and says, chief, that's two days. And that starts immediately. Card them off and take them to jail. They get it two days. If they lie about their, their attendance on a meeting, I don't know, I did the numbers one time, 150 to 180 meetings. By the time you do their, their peer counseling sessions where it's NA or AA, also they have to do one-on-one with substance abuse counselors and they also have to be involved in drug court. By the time you figure all those things up, the, the total meetings, it's about 150 to 180.
Yeah, it is.
While they're doing that, they have to work. And if they come in, they say, well, Judge McIntyre, I can't, I can't find a job. Well, guess what? Then when you come back in two weeks, you're going to bring me a slip signed by a nonprofit that says you volunteered for 40 hours. You're going to be doing something with your time when you're not going to drug court and when you're not doing your peer sessions and when you're not going to your one-on-one counseling and when you're not meeting with your probation officer two or three times a week and getting drug tested, you're going to also volunteer your time. And for those of you who can't stay at home at night, well, guess what? You get a leg bracelet and it's not gold and it does have electronic tracking made of this on it. So Uncle Ted's going to know if you're home at night. And if you're not, guess who's going to show up at your house?
Ted Nugent get brought in.
That's going to be, that's going to be us again. I had a parent say, there's no way my daughter can do this program. This is too much. She's a mother with kids, she can't do it. And I said, exactly. When she learns to do all this, it empowers her to be somebody that she's not been. It's not just as much as throwing a pill or putting them in jail, it changes who they are. And I'll give you an example. One of the things I'm pitching for is this national opioid settlement money is, you know, the pharmaceutical supply chain participants all got sued $26 billion. Donnie got the county on early in the game before the state was even interested in getting involved in it and made us a part of it. And so we got our 0.237% of the state allocation. It breaks down to over 18 years. Average is about $78,000 a year over a period of 18 years. I think the last nine, eight or nine years is $67,000 every year. This year we get 50 something thousand and 100,000. Next year we get a certain block amount of like 125,000 something, but it averages out about $78,000 a year. So the question will be, what do we as a county do with those funds? You know, how do we invest those in, in addressing the opioid epidemic issue that's being created by the large pharmaceutical companies? And drug court is a huge, a huge possibility, not just to give somebody appeal or to give somebody funding. And I, I give you an example, Dr. Banks and them, they reward them. They'll, they'll give them a Bojangles $10 gift card. Some of them need gas money. You've got a mother who can't, or a daughter who can't leave her, the current housing existence because she can't afford a deposit to get a house from. So she's standing at her house with her dad who's strung it on dope. It's a terrible, it's terrible. You've got a guy who's, we're going to call him Q. Q gets into the program because DSS has to step in and say, you know what? You can't have your kids, you're terrible to your kids. We're going to have to take them. And now DSS is strapped with dealing with, with Q's kids and the county's strapped with having to, to pay to make sure that they're in foster care and he's out his kids. And so Q has to get into the program and based on Judge McIntyre and those that are on drug court, all those people we see there, he has to get on board or he's not getting his kids back. And so eventually he not only falls into compliance and starts doing everything he's, he's supposed to do, he also ends up taking all the necessary programs and processes to make DSS satisfied that the kids eventually will be safe. He goes one step further and begins to mentor the others that are coming into the drug court program. And then he comes and says, hey, chief, we need a place to meet. I'd like to start hosting NA meetings. You know what? That's fine. My church will be glad to do that and we'll bring snacks. You know, it's an opportunity for the county to get involved in that. So he begins to host those meetings and, and it empowers him, it changes him. And of course he's got to work the whole time this is going on. I say all that to say that some of the opportunities we would have, and I'm going to give some specifics. We talked about this, this opioid money and what we're going to do over the next 18 years as it's spread out. I think about not only drug court, family treatment court. You know, where the family has to get engaged in this process so that DSS doesn't have to get wriggled in, having to keep the kids for, for 18 months while they go through this. And so having a family treatment court, having youth treatment court, an early intervention youth treatment for those that are high school age kids that are struggling. If they need money for, for housing, help them with it. If they get them out of whatever conditions they're in, if they need money for job skills, if we need to get with Dr. Gossett and Ms. Davis and say, all right, we need some job skills training. These, these folks are going to have to have job skills training. I'd much rather spend my $78,000 on somebody going to college for, for, for six months to learn some job skills training and then to get, help them get a job than I would to have to feed them three meals a day over to Sheriff's Office and, and achieve nothing in the end. Early intervention programs, the things that if they need funding for, for these celebration graduations or if they need funding for transportation. We had a lady one time didn't have a car, she was needing money to put a deposit down on a car. I'm Ted, I don't know if you know this or not, in order to get to 150, 180 meetings, you're going to have to have a way to get there. And that's a huge impediment for somebody who's driving on their boat license, who has, hasn't had a job, who has no money and now they're having to go to drug court. So it's a big deal. I, I want to advocate that when we talk about spending this money, that we support Dr. Banks and all those. And I've talked with her, there's been discussion about having a full-time drug treatment court counselor. Well, we only have nine to 12 to 15 max. And so that's probably not a good utilization of our financial resources, but we have so many intervention programs that could be spun off of this drug court. It would be hugely beneficial and at the same time it is not. And I found it out from sitting on a get out of jail free card. Some of them in the end finally say, you know what? I'll just do my time. It's so much easier. So I appreciate what you're doing and hopefully, hopefully that'll be a part of it. And I want to say as far as our veterans go, I, I'd like to see us look at how this opioid money of the drug treatment court can be specifically tailored and designed for programs and for benefits, whatever those benefits mean, that some of this money could be set aside and utilized for our veterans in this county who are struggling with substance abuse issues. And I think it's a prime opportunity to facilitate that as well.
And one of the individuals who's doing so well is a veteran. So anyway, thank you.
It's one of the few things government gets right and we appreciate the program.
Exactly. Thank you.
Teresa, thank you. Thank everybody else involved and thank my peers. I thank Donnie, I thank Michael for their comments. There's a lot of chatter out there about how do we properly invest the funds that have come to us. With Teresa asked to come tonight, one of the reasons that she's on the agenda, one of the reasons it's being streamed. And if you know anyone who has not seen this or has not heard this tonight, encourage them to log on, watch the video. This is a great step along the path that really will help a lot of people in Madison County. It already has and it will continue to do so. So Teresa, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank everyone involved. And again, I want to thank my peers for their support.
And if I just not say one more thing, as, as Michael mentioned, the ideal of having a full-time drug court coordinator at this point is ridiculous. I mean, save that money for our, for our folks. You know, I'm, I'm very passionate about our folk, our folks, you know? Save that, save that and.
Thank you.
Invest that money, invest that, invest that back into our kids. Thank you.
For that, Donnie, we, we don't have to spend all this money each calendar year. We can roll, bankroll, we can roll it.
That's right.
In the future years and actually extend, even though the payments only last for 18 years, we could potentially set this program up to where it could go for 25, 30 years or more.
And Matt, when you and I, Matt and Tom, that's part of the plan.
I will say just a little addition to that old denim is that part of, part of the importance is, is sometimes drug court puts them in treatment for two weeks. We have put one in treatment and, and in essence the judge has removed them from drug court, put them in long-term treatment for a year. They, they were able to align that and make that happen for themselves. So I, I'm going to advocate as well as part of this drug treatment court is, is the, as far as intervention is getting them out of jail, getting them out of the court system. If they need to go for six months or a year somewhere, spend the money now and be done with it. Pay it now or let them steal all your stuff and stay in jail all the time. So good opportunities.
Thank you, everybody.
At this point in time, I'd like to, Debbie Cromwell, our friends from Ashville-Bunkham Technical Community College. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So for talking about money, I hope I can keep this party going well. Let's see, is the clicker working? Okay. I'll follow you. Okay, so I'm here tonight to talk about funding for Madison County and just Madison County, which the General Assembly funded $12 million for 58 community colleges and counties that actually qualified for the funding. It's in non, it's non-recurring money and it must be spent through December 31st, by December 31st, 2026. So we've got a little while, but actually it'll be here before you know it. The funding target is businesses in tier one and tier two counties. I have provided packets to Mandy for y'all with additional information on this because I don't think everybody wants to hear about how tiers were developed, but it basically is, is, works on a socioeconomic sort of evaluation. And Buncombe County did not qualify, Madison County did. So all of those tiers that qualified are in your packet. So if anybody has any questions about that, and I certainly embrace the audience as well, if any of you are business owners or work for someone who might actually get value out of this, please share, please reach out to us. Sherry Davis is at the Marshall campus and has my information. I am, I am here and available many days of the month and am willing to come anytime that you might need. So again, Madison County, this is for businesses that are considered small businesses, which would be 500 employees or less. So if you have two employees, you qualify. If you have three employees, so anything under 500. It is for youth apprenticeships and that's defined as the ages of 16 to 25 years of age. And the, the business, it's for businesses that are registering an occupation and a career that's considered high demand. This is just a map of the tier designations, which is actually kind of hard to see for folks, but the information is provided and you're, you're welcome at any time to note that. These are, these are the high demand careers. Now, if you don't see your particular job up here, please don't panic because these are just codes. And under each of these codes, let's say if you were to Google or whatever search engine is good for you, let's be politically correct here. The ONET, that's all you had to put in is ONET. If you would just put in 15, so there are actually four digits that come after the 15, but we were trying not to sort of segue folks into just one or two occupations. So if you just put in 15, you'll see every position that would come up under computers and mathematics and IT and it could be as many as 50 or 60. So believe me, your occupation is in there somewhere. All right, so here's where it starts getting good. Here's where the money comes. So for training costs, for every new apprentice that a company hires, and it has to be new apprentice, so if your company is apprenticing right now and they hired somebody before May 20th of this year, then they would not qualify for this money, but May 20th moving forward, this money they do qualify for. So they will receive, we'll, we will receive, AB Tech, this money actually goes to Apprenticeship North Carolina and they are part of the North Carolina Community College System. Our representative for this area is Charlie Milling. He covers 16 to 20 counties. So I'm here to deliver the message so that you don't have to wait until December to hear about it. So you will receive, I will receive for you and you will bill me $2,000 per apprentice for the first year. So if you hired six new apprentices, you would get $2,000 per apprentice for the first year. You would also, and that covers, you, you would get $2,500 to cover books, tuition and fees and you would receive that for two years. Most apprenticeship occupations are one to two years. So I would say you're pretty saturated there, have enough money to take a two-year degree if you want, does not have to be a degree, it can be a short-term training program. Nurse aide is one of those that we're working on a lot in this, in this county. And that is basically a very short-term program, but that's covered as well. Salary match, this is the biggie. This never happens. You know, we always talk about money. You see big press about all this money that the government has given you and then you get the fine details and you can't spend it the way you were hoping or the way you thought it would be. Well, we can, somebody did something right, so we're quite happy here. You can match, so we're matching the salary for the apprentice for 16 to 25 years of age, new apprentice at a 50% base. Okay? So if they are a high school student, we're matching dollar for dollar up to $14 an hour. If they're a non-high school student, again, 16 to 25 years of age. If they're a non-high school student, again, 16 to 25 years of age, then we're reimbursing up to $15 an hour. So in other words, if you're paying that person $30 an hour, we'll give you 15. So dollar-for-dollar match for the first year. That's never happened. So the money will come to AB Tech. You will invoice me, I will pay you. It's as simple as that, um, on your end. Won't be so simple on our end, but it'll be real simple on your end. So the funds must be obligated by December 31st of 2024, that allows them to be spent by 2026 if it's a two-year occupation. The, the invoices again are processed at your local community college that serves the county that has, the county that's receiving the funds. We'll have yearly monitoring and, and, you know, the, the things that come along with when you get money. There will be an opportunity for you to always see how much you have left, um, permissions on how you can spend that money. There are folks who've gotten pretty creative, that $2,000, some folks are saying, can we bonus? Yes, you can. So I know there's a big deal right now in trying to find folks. Um, you, you know, I mean, there's, there's just plenty of opportunity to decide and design with that 2,000. The 2,500 is for books, fees, and tuition, but that 2,000 is pretty wide open. So let's just talk a little bit about what is a registered apprenticeship program, and I'm just giving the quick and easy here, I'm happy to give further explanation to anybody who might need it at another date. Um, so a registered apprenticeship is actually the nation's most successful funded workforce development initiative. There are five components for a registered apprenticeship. The first one is employer involvement. So that means whoever is apprenticing, training, they are employed, you have hired them. That's that earn while you learn. If you've, if you've seen all sorts, we've got, we've got things out now on TV, radio called Earn While You Learn, that's exactly what this is. So you're earning money while you're learning. So let's say, if you're an employer, and you have had a, an opening for an HVAC technician forever, can't find them, this is actually quite real, because you can't find them.
Are you listening, Brooke?
Yeah, that's it. That's right. Exactly, yeah.
Good deal.
So, um, and you maybe have, maybe you have an incumbent worker, maybe you have somebody who works for you but does not meet the qualifications to, to be your HVAC person. Then you would upskill them, that's what apprenticing is, you would upskill them. So for every year of an apprenticeship is considered 2,000 hours, you're required 144 hours of that, uh, job-related education. So there's a structured, they're hired, there's a structured on-the-job learning, you will decide as the employer, and only you will decide, it's completely up to you, what do I need to be able to have this person trained? Not something we're giving you and telling you you need to do, you have to fit, no. It is what you need as the employer. Again, that job-related education instruction for every 2,000 hours, which is considered one year, you have to have 144 hours of that, uh, job-related education instruction. You can get that many ways. You can get that onboarding, all those hours count, anything online counts, obviously, anything in the classroom with us, uh, counts. And might I just say, we certainly would hope everyone would come to AB Tech, but this funding is not just for AB Tech, it is for the residents and business owners of Madison County. So we know that Madeline offers some training, and that sometimes employers use Madeline, we will reimburse for that as well, because this is the county of which the money is, is funded. So again, we want you to come to us, we hope we can meet all your needs, but it is for Madison County, period, not for AB Tech. Reward for skill gains is, again, there's a progressive wage scale, so that's one of the components. So when you complete your paperwork, which will be with Charlie Milling, um, and Charlie is the representative for this area, covers 16 to 20 counties, very busy gentleman, there's initial paperwork that has to be completed, no fees, it's very simple, I promise, walk you right through it. You will establish a wage, and you will establish an end rate, which will design what your beginning rate is. So let's just say, let's just pick a number and say you're paying somebody $30 an hour at the end when they're trained fully, as if they had walked in the door completely trained, applying for that position. We'll just pick that number. You must start them then at least half of that. So when they start out as an apprentice, they would have to start at half that $30. You can pay them more than 30, but you set that end rate. You would start them at 15, because 30 is your end rate, or minimum wage, whichever is higher. From that point, you determine, and you've determined this upfront, when do they get wage increase? At what point do those increments come? I don't know many places where we can go in and become better at our job and know that we're gonna get a raise. Okay, this is like outlined for you upfront. Folks know when they reach a certain skill set, I'm gonna get a raise. When I go to the next level, I'm gonna get a raise. This is all contractual, it's all agreed upon upfront. Then there's a national occupational credential at the end, it's called Journey Workers Card. We used to call it Journeyman's Card, but we're being politically correct now, so we call it Journey Workers Card, and it's nationally, excuse me, nationally recognized. Um, it's actually world, worldwide recognized, but we say nationally. Uh, that tells anybody, any state that you would move to, that you meet certain specifications that are required for a particular occupation, that you meet the highest of standards. So that's, that's basically in a nutshell what a registered apprenticeship is. Any questions?
I had just, I want to clarify a couple things. Before I do that
Yep.
Got the President of AB Tech here.
Yep.
Madison County folks love Dr. Gossett, we love Director Sherry Davis and Workforce Development
Stacy P.
Stacy P.
He's here.
And both here, they do an awesome job for this county, and my family loves them, and this community loves them, and AB Tech should be highly, uh, commended for having chose them in those particular roles. They're awesome. Thank you, guys. We agree.
We do, and they have been extremely beneficial to me. Obviously, I work at the main campus, and Francis Ramsey, Commissioner, I mean, I have had help from all sorts of folks. So Miss, so Commissioner Gentry has been just helpful, he's actually gotten me here, um, O'Neil Sheldon, I mean, just members of the community have embraced this opportunity, it's a great opportunity, and I have met with many, many folks. Commissioners Nelson is actually going to apprentice, so, um, I'm sorry that he's not feeling well, but he is actually one of our participants, and I, I, we meet with, with folks anytime somebody wants to talk about it or meet, I'm here, I'm here.
Just as a point of clarity, uh, public or private?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
If you, if you're a guy that runs HVAC place private, then you're looking for it. If the county's looking for somebody in HVAC or a DSS caseworker
Yes.
That they want to groom
Yep.
To fall into position of moving forward to get a four-year degree, um, solid waste, CDL driver, any of those could apply.
Yeah, as long as that 16 to 25 range, and, and we had some, and they must be employed. So your volunteer fire departments, sadly, that they have to be employed, they have to be paid, that was sort of
What about some of ours are?
Yes, some of yours are, and we have
What about the workload, the number of hours that are required to work per week with the employer and the caseload of academic
Yes, that's completely up to the employer, and you do not have to take, for this money, you do not have to take a full caseload, but you're only gonna get it for two years.
Right.
But still, it's a, it's a great start. And let me just sort of clarify for folks who work for a big entity, but there's a satellite office here, as long as there's an office here, that's what qualifies you. So if you work for a big entity, a government entity, and obviously, there's more than 500 employees, but your office here has 20, you qualify. So
So that would even get print pack and everybody
Yes, I've spoken with print pack
After salary, and $5,000 for tuition and books and
Yep. I mean, it's really the fact, we've never paid someone who's not our employee, and we're, you know, so, I mean, this is really, um, probably a budget nightmare, but a beautiful thing for you, so we'll take a beautiful nightmare.
The cap's 25 years of age, so
Yes, it is, right now. Um, you know, so this is, this is a beginning. I would venture to say, probably most of you already know this, almost any money that's coming out of the government right now, it has work-based learning listed somewhere in there, whether that's pre-apprenticeships, apprenticeships, whatnot, so that, that's absolutely listed in almost any, any kind of funding that you'll receive, and we're delighted to, um, you know, to help in that. Uh, I, I'm the Director of Work-Based Learning and Apprenticeships at AB Tech, it's a new department, because Dr. Gossett has seen that we have the need, he's, he's extremely excited about all of this, he's here tonight, um, to share that excitement with you and to support, and, I mean, everybody who I've spoken to so far has been pretty darn excited because there's no, there's nothing written between the lines, you know what I'm saying? It's real, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Very, very much, thank you.
My pleasure.
Those folks that are here, you know, that's private or public, so, you know, somebody in the private sector that's looking to hire or recruiting or promoting, uh, this is a huge opportunity.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Thank you.
We move on to item six of Commissioner Wecton.
Thank you, gentlemen. First, I come to you on behalf of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and we have a, we're doing this a little bit early this year, uh, because we have, um, the way our scheduled meetings have fallen, uh, it's kind of created the, the need to do it, uh, a little bit early. But, uh, I bring to you tonight a proclamation for Constitution Week 2022, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2022, marks the 235th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition, recognition, sorry, uh, to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, we, Matthew Wecton, Michael Garrison, Norris Gentry, Craig Goforth, and Mark Snellson, by virtue of the authority vested in us as commissioners of the County of Madison, of the great state of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week, and we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness thereof, we have hereon to set our hands and cause the seal of Madison County to be affixed this ninth day of August in the year of our Lord 2022. I've already signed the document, I'm gonna pass it to my right, and then we'll send her back to the left here. We'll have to get Commissioner Snellson to sign it when he feels better. Um, and, uh, make that to you guys in form of motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Thank you, sir.
Um, as a side note, I'd like to invite everyone on behalf of the Daughters of the American Revolution, uh, on September 17th at 3:30 PM, the Madison County Courthouse, they will be having, uh, their celebration for Constitution Week, and the proclamation, I believe, will also be involved in that as well, and I am honored to be a part of that program, and I thank them for, uh, for that, for that honor. And so, uh, everybody, appreciate it very much, thank you for, uh, allowing us to do this.
Thank you.
Nope, sorry.
Do you also have a part B there, sir?
I do have a part B. Um, part B is totally unrelated, um, but, uh, just to give everybody an update, um, I was approached by the Marcell Fire Department recently. Um, as many of you may have seen in the newspaper, um, there was, uh, the Marcell Fire Department was providing mutual aid to North Carolina Highway Patrol in regards to an accident on I-26, and unfortunately, um, an individual, uh, was too busy rubbernecking, and he drove straight into the fire truck, um, causing pretty extensive damage to the, uh, to the Marcell Fire, Fire Department's, uh, apparatus. Um, that fire truck is out of commission for quite a while as it goes in for repairs. Um, so Marcell Fire Department, uh, came to me as I serve on the, the Metropolitan Plane Organization and the Rural Plane Organization at Landisky, which handles DOT issues, and, um, so we have reached out to folks at DOT, and what the request is, is to have, uh, North Carolina DOT's IMAP, those are the, uh, emergency trucks that help with accident, uh, or traffic control in the event of accident, or sometimes even construction. They currently stop at Monticello Road in Weaverville on I-26. So we are, um, going to appeal, uh, to, to North Carolina DOT this Friday. I have a meeting with those folks, uh, and the Town of Morris Hill Fire Department folks, and, uh, Landisky, NC DOT, and we're gonna talk about what might possibly need to be done in order to, uh, encourage NC DOT to extend the IMAP program all the way through Madison County to the Tennessee State Line. Um, so we'll, I'll keep you posted on that as things develop, and this also was not just because of one incident, but a couple of years ago, um, they had a, the Epps Chapel Fire Department also had a truck that was struck when they were, uh, providing mutual aid to the Highway Patrol in another situation up, up near Wolf Laurel, and, uh, so this, we obviously want to protect our volunteer fire departments, and also, it's, it's a pretty big deal when one of our departments has a, a big piece of equipment that goes down for an extended period of time. Uh, it jeopardizes, um, not only residents of Epps Chapel or Morris Hill, but it jeopardized a lot of us, because Morris Hill and Epps Chapel provide mutual aid to, to other fire departments within the county. So, um, this is a big, uh, big project hopefully we'll undertake and, uh, be able to, to get DOT to, uh, extend their service through Madison County.
Thank you, man.
Indeed, thank you. Item number seven is Chris Maney, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, for y'all.
We're good.
Good. I'll be brief. About this time every year, I come before you, uh, ask for the, uh, Community Foundation of West North Carolina holds a fund for Barnard Park. Uh, Dr. Steen, I think, kind of spearheaded many years ago, um, that fund's up to $1,060 this year. Uh, I think the, the sole purpose of the fund has to be used for maintenance or preservation of the park, can't be used for any kind of, uh, maintenance, personnel, anything like that. Um, in the past, I've used it for gravel, signage, uh, this year, I've got a couple benches in mind to go around the walking trail, uh, it gets heavily used down there. I was there this morning, and there was people from Oregon, Colorado, you know, not counting the, the mini buses there, so, uh, anyway, I'd like to get that money, um, going down there. Any questions on?
Just for clarification, that, the, the, the fund that was set up by Dr. Steen specifically, um, calls out that the money must be used at Barnard Park, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, sir, that's correct, that is correct.
Pretty clear, and do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Sorry, that dumped me.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Chris.
Our Human Resources Director, Brooke Ledford, good evening.
Evening.
Good luck.
So in your packets, you should have the proposed 2023 holiday schedule. Um, this is the exact same schedule that the state uses, um, so I'm just asking that you approve this schedule, so I can get it out to, to our employees.
Pretty standard. Mr. Chair, I, I move that we, uh, follow the schedule as it is, the same schedule that the state of North Carolina
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Our support kind tonight.
That's in stereo for me.
Put those together.
Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Okay. Thank you, Brooke.
Hey, Brooke, I have one quick question, I'll, I'll, I'm sorry. We talked last month about moving forward with, uh, a private firm maybe doing, and Saturday, we're still working on that, I guess.
Still in progress.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Our next item is number nine, we have Kerry Ledford, our Finance Officer, good evening.
And so Kerry.
Good evening, gentlemen. So before you tonight, for your approval, is Budget Amendment Number Two. This amendment records the addition of three new grants received by your library director, the total of all three being $61,917. Information on each of those should be Information on each of those should be in your packets as well. Also, you'll see the recording of the first installation, installment of the opioid settlement in the amount of $58,832.66.
Can I just ask for clarification? Because my budget amendment that's in my packet says it's Budget Amendment 13, but it does have today's date on it. So, I just wanted to make sure that we have the right information.
You have the right information. You probably, that's probably just a big typo on my part.
Okay, cut and paste. I understand.
All right.
No worries.
That's it.
I'm guilty. I've done it before, too.
Okay. Also recording is the additional revenue generated by the quarter cent sales tax in the amount of $51,227.22. And these funds will be distributed to the Board of Education pending your approval.
Gentlemen, we've heard from our Finance Officer. Do I have a motion to approve this budget amendment in front of us?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second, but I got discussion.
Okay, absolutely. We're to discussion now.
The contingency is?
After this amendment, it will be $81,597.
And with this amendment, we are adding to or subtracting?
You are adding to it.
Adding, sir. Making sure.
Thank you.
I've got just a quick question, since I can find it. Sorry, my solitary gain is getting in the way here. Just kidding about that, by the way. What's going on, anybody? Right, seeing?
Playing video poker actions.
It's a part of that. I know that there was $30,000 check to the county.
That's correct.
It's part of a judgment.
That's correct.
I don't know the proper time to discuss that, Donnie, but I'd like for this board to entertain the allocation of that $30,000 to be put into the economic development or developmental services, pardon me, developmental services budget to increase the coverage of overtime to attend training for the inspectors and for any other economic development initiatives and projects, considering this was a kind of a thorn in the flesh for them. So, I'd like to profit of this board that we allocate that to increase their budget for development service opportunities.
Outside of Donnie, nobody worked harder on this than, than that, than that department did. And I would say they might even work harder than Donnie, but Donnie gets a lot of credit because he was the guy that went to court.
Still won the court.
Yeah.
I, I think that would be an excellent, I think, I think it is an excellent idea, but they're particularly for any other things they're doing right now, economic development wise.
Yeah, and I just want clarity, not just for economic development, for developmental services for inspectors because they're concerned about making sure they're properly funded. And I appreciate Mr. Honeycutt coming forward when he did before to talk about a problem with that process. And that, that was, that could have been a problem, for sure. And the fact that Brad and the folks at Development Services were able to address that, streamline it where it's no longer an issue. But they're under an immense amount of pressure at this time because there's such a boom in housing development, buildings, and they have limited staff. So, this would be an opportunity if we need, if they needed to incur some overtime expense to ensure that building sites were being inspected in timely fashion or if they needed to have a part-time inspector to come in and do some work or if they need to go to Charleston, South Carolina to get that Level Three Inspector Certification Training and if they also needed for economic development issues. So, it's a, it's much needed and it would be appropriate for that money to go to them instead of being afforded into the general fund.
We are in a discussion phase now, so I think we'll have to take that out. I'll vote on this first thing before we get anything further.
Correct. And I would assume that that would need to come to us in the form of a budget amendment to do that, correct?
Yes, it would.
Anything else special that we would have to do in order to do that, just entertain a budget amendment?
Well, I'd say, too, that maybe we have that conversation next time when the chair is actually here.
Bring the budget amendment next time.
And I am in concurrence. I think it's an excellent idea. Any further discussion?
Staff can go ahead and start preparing for that. That'd be great.
Okay. Hearing no other further discussion, all in favor? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next is Item B, and that's July's financial reports. On the first page, you'll see that we are 8.33% into the FY '23 budget. And on the second page, you'll see that for all funds, we have received 2.65% of our revenues and our expenses at 9.21%.
Questions, gentlemen?
It's this, I was looking through this last Friday. Is this the area where, or did I miss it? Where we had a bill that was?
The Wi-Fi bill?
Yeah, it was $3,000. $3,588 passed due from 3/26.
That's part of the budget amendment as well because that money was carried over from a grant. So, since it was from last year's money, I had carried the money over not knowing that bill was out there. So, part of the budget amendment is reducing the amount that was carried over. And the bill was going to a former, an address, email address from a former employee. So, it was sitting out there.
That's reasonable, sir. Got you. Concerned. Thank you for.
So, it just kind of slipped through the cracks.
That's correct.
No worries. We fixed it. That's all that matters.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks, here.
Item number 10 is Diana Norton, our Tax Administrator. Good evening.
Good evening, Diana. Evan, do you want to see if you can pull the stuff up on the screen for us?
Do we want to just make a mention there, Norris? The $2,000 trust, I'm gift, or, I'm sorry, not Norris. Mr. Vice Chair, before we get to the tax stuff, we had a donation to our Development Services and hope that it's going to be an ongoing support.
That was done anonymously, but.
That was done anonymously.
Then we'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Chief.
But there was an anonymous donation that was very nice that was, that was done from one of our county residents. We'll leave it at that. And, yes, good thing.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
A very nice resident. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the first thing is the approval of the releases and refunds.
Even though I broke the screen.
I've found.
It's just because there's not many on there this time.
Load up enough where I can read it. It works.
I'm getting there.
It takes me a little while.
I'm just, I'm just little screen.
Was here. The lights went on and off several times. I don't know what, what that did to the thing. Okay.
So, am I looking right, Diana? We just have three?
Yes.
So, gentlemen, looking at those three, do we have any, our conversation?
Trying to get my computer caught back up here.
My apologies.
Nope, you're good. No, no, no conversation on my part.
Okay.
Or no discussion, I should say.
Chief?
None.
Mr. Gentry?
I'm good.
Okay. So, can I have a motion to approve, please?
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
A discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
So, next is the foreclosures and we will be having a foreclosure sale on September 8th. There'll be three properties at 11 o'clock.
Thank you.
Is that the Kenya update?
It is.
So, we've got three.
Three.
Properties that are going for sale on the courthouse steps on when?
September 8th.
8th. September 8th. Very good.
And those are foreclosures that were given due notice. The attorneys have went through the processes that have been set out for them and the taxes have not been paid.
Correct.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
So, the next thing is Auto Agent. That is a new credit card company that I've been talking with. Norris, Mandy, Carrie, everybody sat in on it with me. And I'm asking for your approval to move forward with them.
Now, I know the fee is two and a half percent, so $25 if somebody's going to pay their taxes. And that's credit card or debit card?
It is, and we're, they're currently paying 2.75%.
So, if somebody comes or calls and wants to pay their taxes, if it's $1,000, they're going to have to pay additional $25 to utilize those convenience fees. And that's actually better than the 27.50 if we wouldn't have.
Correct.
An electronic check is $1.50, correct?
Correct, and we're, they're currently paying 2.50.
If people still have the opportunity, if they want to mail a check in or drop a check by. We need any type of action on that?
Yes.
I make a motion based on the recommendation of a tax factor that would go with Auto Agent.
Second. Discussion, gentlemen?
Yeah, the discussion is basically, Diana and I have talked about this. Essentially, at this point in time, these credit card processing companies view debit cards and credit cards essentially as being identically, being the exact same thing.
They do.
In the past, years ago, financial institutions looked at debit cards differently and didn't charge the same fees that they do for credit cards. But those, those days appear to be days gone by. Is that a correct summary of what's going on?
Yes.
And I say that all just because I've had some people question that, have called me to question that. So, I just wanted to go on the record that we did ask the question. We did try to find more favorable fees for people who use debit cards. We just haven't found a service out there yet that, that is, that still does that.
No.
And this contract does include one payment device and we're going to purchase two more that cost $200 bucks.
Motion second on the floor. Any further discussion?
Those devices don't have to be repurchased each year, though, right? If we stay with these folks, which, as long as.
No, they said any upgrades to the system, that they would, they would supply those at no cost to the county.
Correct. So, we just pay the one time as long as we stay with them.
Correct.
Got you. Very good. All right. No further discussion on my part, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you.
The next is the presentation of the annual settlement for 2021.
One quick question about this. Looking at this chart here, that we're at.
That's one of the reports.
Yeah. Looking at that particular report, which is paid 72.
Which is page what?
72, 178. There you go.
We still got 100 pages to go, folks.
I just want to point of clarity on the collection because I know our collection rate, we were really happy with coming up to almost 97%. But under the column where it says amount collected and percent collection, it looks like in years past, it's been, is that correct? 98.5, 98.7?
No, that's where we are currently. That's the day I printed those.
So, that's the collection, it's like 2018.
Like today, if you came in and paid last year's taxes, it's adding in on that year.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, so what you're saying is the percentage, the tax collection rate for that year at that time.
Is not on this report.
But because we've gone and collected back taxes.
Correct.
Then those, those percentages adjust upward.
Correct.
That makes sense. Those efforts, yeah, those efforts.
And it removes, the foreclosures removes them from the books and too as well, right? So, that also puts percentage higher.
Thank you for that clarity.
Good job, Diana. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need, we need a motion to approve, gentlemen.
I make a motion we approve.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
And the next thing is order of collection for 2022.
And I do want you to elaborate about the, the effort that has gone in to make sure that for the first time in several years, this is out on time.
The bills?
Yes.
Everything in our office is completed. We are just waiting on our computer system to generate bills.
Yeah. Fair.
Yes.
But it's on schedule?
We are.
We are. Yes. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are they having issues getting paper? Is that part of the problem?
I'm having issues getting them to create a file.
Oh, okay. So, the issue is with Faragut itself?
Yes.
They're not aware of our displeasure.
Just a point of note. Jump through all that. That puts us at page 150 of 178. So, everybody can relax. It's not going to be that bad.
I'm still scrolling.
I told you many ago, just it wasn't going to be that bad.
I'm at 112 right now. My computer scroll slow.
Diana, will you keep us up to date if that does not come to fruition soon? Let us know where we are so that we can be rightfully.
I will.
Yeah, that's, I was looking for, yeah, I had to find a better word. Yes, yes.
We've been assured it will be.
Thank you. Because that's so much work you've done for it not to get out on time because of their.
I agree.
Issues.
I agree.
We do need a motion for the order of.
Yes.
Yes, we do. Do I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? No discussion? All right. All in favor? Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, is there, are there any provisions for us to, to go back to them for not getting those out on time?
Performance, maybe?
Probably not because those, it's in their control. And they got, it, it would be a problem with the system. The system's been turned over to us now, correct? You're not ordering that from Faragut.
Faragut has to create our bill and file. I cannot do that.
It is in their contract.
Yeah, we've never been able to create the file. Once we have everything done, they, it's in their hands to create that file.
I can look at the contracts and what they're applying.
We might need a credit on our annual.
A rebate?
Yeah. Put it on record.
I will. That's a record.
It's a good point.
Yes, ma'am.
I think Donnie's going to take over for me right here.
I, I will. For last item, number L.
Yes, sir.
Did we talk about this in the past? I've got a little summary that comes down from the School of Government and Department of Revenue regarding reappraisal. And you know that we did our last reappraisal. Helped me, I think it was effective 2020. Is that right?
Yes.
And generally, we're on the octennial reappraisal, which is what the statute says you have to have them at least every eight years. And in 2021, we got a letter from the Department of Revenue that was addressed to our assessor that basically said, due to the sales ratio changes and what the OR does is after 2020, in 2021, they looked at the sales that occurred in Madison County and compared those to the values that we had in 2020. And what happened is that the values that everybody got an assessment for on their 2020 tax bill, the next year, those properties were selling quite a bit high. Okay? Across the board. And what the Department of Revenue, they look at those. They get those numbers. And they sent us a letter telling us that the values had gone up and they recommended strongly to you that you do a revaluation on a four-year cycle as opposed to an eight-year cycle because of those changes. Now, the Department of Revenue can mandate Department of Revenue can mandate that you have to have a change if they go up really high. We did not get to the point that they made you do it, but you're at the point to where they say you're so close to it that we strongly recommend that you do that.
Essentially, if we don't do it, we're gonna make you do it.
No, we're not there yet.
But we're close.
We're not there yet. We still could get to that point, but we're not. If we get the mandatory letter from them, then we have to implement and, and do a reappraisal within thirty months of the date that we get that letter. Uh, this one is just said, you're so close to it, we are strongly recommending that you do that. And, and you do not have to do it. You sort of don't want to get on the bad side of the Department of Revenue, but that is what they've said. And in plans for that, what we have been doing is that we did let the bids for a company to come in and do the reappraisal for us. We have asked for a very thorough reappraisal to be effective January first, twenty twenty-four. We've got that bid in. We've not contracted with them because before we can do this, you have to adopt a resolution stating that you will implement the reappraisal in a year of your choice. Now, there is no way one can be done before January one, third, twenty-four. In fact, we're going to be pushed to, to, to get one done then. The documents that I gave you simply says you need, um, I think it's twelve to eighteen months of plan. Okay? We started planning for this in May, so we're, we're within that eighteen-month framework of doing it because that's when we let the RFQ for the bid. Before we can actually do it, you have to adopt a resolution and send it to D O R. You've got before you three proposed resolutions. Each of them, uh, would mandate a reevaluation, January one, twenty twenty-four. One of them that then would say your next, the, the statute also requires that if you choose to go early, you've got to state in what cycle you're going to be doing it on thereafter.
Got you.
You've got before you twenty twenty-four, then doing again one on a four-year cycle, a six-year cycle, and an eight-year cycle. Eight is the most you can go on. So, uh, you, you've got some, you've actually got four options in front of you. Number one, are you going to do? Number two, if you do do it, are you going to go on a four-year cycle, a six-year cycle, or an eight-year cycle?
Mr. Lawson, we're on a short leash to make a decision on this, sir.
You, you are on a short leash if you are going to do the revow beginning January one, twenty twenty-four. Uh, you, you, you obviously, if you would want to push it out to January one, twenty twenty-five, you would have more time to do that if you would want to do.
My, my question was, can we do it? Can we do it next month when the chair is back with us? Or is it, is it a denied issue, sir?
Well, you know, we, we've got the bids in. We, we've got a one bid that, that looks like it is a good bid. Would you agree, Madam Assessor?
Yes.
Uh, they are, they're, you know, if, they're not what they, they don't have to hold that bid up. So if we don't contract with them and, and, and by the time we get in touch with them, they say, hey, we're booked up, then you're not going to meet that January one, twenty twenty-four. I don't know what they're going to do, but if you do want to put it off, certainly that is your pleasure.
We've checked the references, Diane, on the, the, the one company?
Yeah, y'all have already voted on that company.
Right.
Yeah.
So, um, that being said, Mr. Chair, I know, I know you would want our chair here, but unless we have a tie vote, his vote really is meaningless anyway, so.
That wasn't funny. Okay. Yes, sir. That was very, that was very accurate. Yes.
I actually, for privilege, I actually spoke with him today on a couple of issues and he said he consented to the will of the.
Okay. So we have, we have it before us. Do we need a motion, Mr. Lawson?
Yes, you do. You need to adopt a motion on one of those resolutions that, that, that you got in your packages under item one.
Uh, it's ten M.
Ten M.
Yes, sir.
Which mandate very adequately prepared those proposed resolutions for.
Mr. Gentry, do you have one of the resolutions that you think that we should look at first, sir?
Well, the first one is to do the reavow for January of twenty twenty-four.
Okay. The, the, the first one is if you do want to do it in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Would be to choose one of the three.
Correct.
If you elect not even to do it in January one, twenty twenty-four, then you don't need to consider any of the resolutions.
And then the question would be to continue at four, six, or eight. Based on our past history, and this is the first full measure since, Diane, of two thousand and five.
Two thousand and four.
Four. So it has been almost twenty years since we did a full measure in Madison County. And would you briefly explain what full measure? I know we've done it before in meetings. How that differed than what we have done in that basically twenty years?
Previously, they've just been driving up. If they'll look at the property card, and if nothing has changed noticeably, they don't even get out of the car. Um, with the full measuring list, they have to get out of the car. They have to put a measuring tape on your house. They have to measure everything on your property to make sure we have it correct in the system.
We're talking about structures.
Correct.
Just to be clear, because I think there's a lot of folks out there right now who think that this involves people coming and looking to see what kind of equipment they might have on their property or all that. We're only talking about real property. We're not talking about personal property.
Correct.
We're not talking about business personal property.
Correct.
What we're talking about is real property, just so people out there are clear. So this is going to be your house, barn, shed, garage, mother-in-law apartment, whatever your situation might be.
Yep.
I personally, I'm right in my manager's head now, I would recommend the four-year based on where we are and our past history of, and hopefully develop a, uh, more equitable and, uh, more even and better, uh, assessment of property.
I'm gonna preface this. I, I, I'm not a candidate for doing anything tonight because our chair is not here. We've waited this long, thirty days, ain't gonna, the world's not gonna break. He and I may end up disagreeing and have to have a fight after the meeting, but at least he will have had full measure of opportunity to engage in conversation. So that being said, generally speaking, going with, my taxes are too high. I'm just telling you, I pay too much taxes. I don't like paying them. I don't want to pay anymore. When that tax assessor comes up my driveway, I know it's gonna, he's gonna say, chief, you're not paying enough. Now we have to pay more. I don't like that. And all of us that are sitting here all suffer the same consequences. If we, every time that we do a reassessment, whether it's a drive-by, whether it's looking on the internet, or whether they get out and actually look, we have to allocate financial funding to do that. Correct? Four hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand. So that's a problem. We're gonna do this every four years. That's just that much more money that we're gonna have to financially pay out. Now, sure, we'll get it back. You know why we'll get it back? Because the taxes will go up. But still, we're paying it out. You know, every four years, we're having to pay somebody in the community to tell us that we need to pay more taxes. Uh, so that's, that's my first problem. The second problem is it ha- could have a huge, and I know we get more money, but it could have a huge financial burden every four years if the reevaluations, that means every four years, my taxes potential go up if real estate continues to climb in the market. So I don't like that because I, my taxes are too high. Um, and the third thing is, four years to me doesn't give us enough of the curve, looking at market values to see how the, because right now we're in a boom. Everybody's fleeing the city. Why? Because this is the greatest place on earth. But when they, when that happens, we can charge more for our stuff and they pay more. They'll pay whatever. Eighty percent of them are buying property without ever even having stepped foot on it. Yeah, we want that. Uh, so we're in, we're in a high curve right now. To me, given six or eight years gives us more time to delineate out exactly what the market is and what properties worth. Not what it's worth, it's, it's like my stock market account. I looked at it the other day and it was hurtful. They told you not to.
You mean you've got one?
They tell, they tell you not to.
Don't tell the feds. Don't be after it next.
So to me, to get a real feel, normally speaking, uh, about what our properties are worth and what it's selling for, so that we, we properly assess value, even if it means to point out, I'm a proponent of six or eight years based on the fact it costs us every time we do an appraisal, uh, based on the fact it's potential that, uh, people's property taxes are gonna go up more, and based on the fact that we need a more, a longer term to four years to see how the market values are going.
Well, in, in consideration of that, you know, when we first got the letter, we thought that it was a mandate of having to do it. That's the reason I wanted you to know tonight that you've got four options. Okay? D O R is not mandating that you do this. If they change at a certain level, they can make you do it within that thirty minutes. They're just recommending.
Now, I'm not saying, I'm gonna clarify that. I'm, I'm not saying we don't do the twenty twenty-four. I think as long as it's being, we had a lot of problems before the question review.
Oh, yeah.
Of people saying, hey, this, and, and did anybody come out to my house? And that was a valid statement.
Well, it's been twenty years.
So, yeah, I think we're probably just about obligated to do one in twenty twenty-four. But after that, I'm looking at eight years.
And we've got, you know, you've got your, you've got your bid, so you know what it's gonna cost you. And, you know, I, I don't know, thirty days, we'll just, we'll just make it tighter. Can we do it? You know, if they want our money, they will do.
Yeah. Well, what, because what if we commit to the, the twenty twenty-four and we just don't commit to these?
That's not a pro- well.
I think we can, according to the D O R. They just needed that on file. They didn't say that we couldn't go ahead and start the reappraisal. They just want on file when our next one is gonna be.
No, no, the, the statute says you need to put the resolution as to what cycle that you're going to do it. I still don't think that that states that after you do that resolution, we can amend that resolution as to what the cycle is going to pass thereafter.
So it's a draft?
No, it's not that. He's saying we're gonna do it half.
I know, I'm being. I'm going back to our tax.
You can go up to the six years, or you can go up to the eight years. And then if you needed it, I would tell you to leave it at eight years. And then if we needed to pull back, then we'll adopt another resolution saying we're going to do it before then.
That's good advice.
Yeah.
Of course, because he agrees with me.
Back to your other point, Michael. Do we move tonight or do we wait thirty days?
Well, I don't have a problem moving tonight with the twenty twenty-four because I think the chair and all of us.
He, he did say that.
That was coming down the pipe. We've all planned and been, I don't know, I just don't want to commit.
So we have consensus on the twenty twenty-four, right?
Do it with the eight years. Do it with the twenty twenty-four with the eight year then, because that will take it out as far as you can.
Just, just that, why, I, it's my feeling that we'll be back forward, but I will go with eight.
Okay.
Eight, eight is amendable, so that's.
That's right.
All amendable. Alright, so we don't, if we need to change it, don't like it.
It's a draft.
Then I make a motion that we do the twenty twenty-four reassess, reappraisal, and that we fall to an eight-year cycle.
Yes, now that we, resolution number three, I believe, Mr. Lawson.
Yes, sir.
That is resolution number three, which I am not reading into the record because it's in all of your book and it's on, it'll be on the screen.
We have the understanding that should the chair at any point want to modify that, we can revisit.
We all, we need to in the future modify.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Awesome. All in favor?
I think we'll be back.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for a very well done.
Thank you.
You may be, but, yeah. I think the market's gonna start cooling.
Well, if adventure, you're up now, sir.
Actually, if the market falls, it would be beneficial to do one in four because the market.
It's beneficial for us.
Yeah. All right. Um, moving on into the county manager's fairly brief update, then we've got several items that we have, um, in that. And, um, so we have a couple of updates. Uh, Golden Leaf Projects continue to move along very quickly and, uh, item H, uh, or G, actually, in my part, uh, is part of the Golden Leaf for Spring Creek tonight. Um, Michael, if you want to chime in on the work that we've been doing with the courthouse, uh, work and moving forward, and our architect is coming back the end of the month. Uh, we are making progress in how we are going to address that, uh, the whole project. Um, and I think that we will probably, I hope, have a report to the commissioners in September, uh, to how we move forward. You got anything else you'd like to add to that?
Very productive meetings the last couple we've had, so I'm excited about.
We have decided to go ahead and move with the new electronic court system. Um, and we have been approved to go forward with that. And I was talking with Donnie earlier today. Anson County is doing exactly the same thing. And what this will do, it will dramatically reduce inmate travel. And for a lot of court appearances, they can be done electronically. And it will also, uh, hopefully move the crowded court docket forward. Pandemic has caused a real backlog in the court docket, and so we have been approved. We're proceeding forward. We cleared with I T today, and we're going to keep moving with that even while we're renovating the courthouse. Because we're gonna make every effort to continue to use that courtroom as much as we possibly can. That's probably.
Cause we have to.
Well, and also, it's part of the building that probably will get the, the least amount of work, uh, of some cosmetic work in there. But the courtroom, it's been upgraded for security. It's been upgraded on electronics otherwise. So we're hoping we'll be able to, uh, continue. But we have been approved and we're moving forward with the electronic court system. Um, also, we're moving ahead pretty rapidly on H V A C and other maintenance items which are included in this year's budget. We did receive our newest roll-off truck for solid waste. This has been in the long-term plan for providing, uh, better equipment. I know you guys, every time you drive down the road and you see the equipment go by, but we have another, uh, new roll-off truck. Those are huge investments, but it's absolutely essential to be able to move the trash around the county safely and have safe and up-to-date equipment. Uh, we are continuing to move forward with a solid waste fee appeal and waiver for nonprofits. Donnie, do you want to speak on that for a minute?
We are. That's the, the program that you hopefully will approve at your September meeting because we want to get that implemented early on in the process. So we'll be able to, everybody can have an opportunity to make an application for the waiver in the program or either appeal the solid waste.
Correct.
That's been a big concern of, of this board and, and we can, you'll certainly have a program that you implement at your September meeting.
Okay. Very good.
Can I also put a blurb in here about, uh, justice, Newby coming as a commander of courthouse staff?
Yeah. Uh, Michael was mentioning that we had the Chief Justice of the State Supreme Court, uh, Justice Newby came to visit us a few days ago and, uh, praised our court service here and gave recognition to long-serving members, including one that received a twenty-year service certificate in the clerk of the court's office. And, uh, it's very nice to have the Chief Justice come and visit us, spend time, and tell the good court votes that we do have a excellent clerk of the court's office and an excellent court system here. And many of us were present for that, and, uh, it was very nice. And it was very nice for all those people who worked very hard in that office. And I said, uh, some of them received twenty-year certificates. That's a long time to be in that. And, uh, it's something we overlook a lot of the time because it works so well. You know, things, things that work well, work smooth, uh, oftentimes they, they, they don't get the attention, but it was not. get the attention, but it was nice for the chief justice to be here.
Well, unfortunately, most of the people in this room don't have to utilize the court much, so that's a good thing, too. But for those, for those who do.
Well, yeah, of course, the clerk of the court does all sorts of other things, and many of us.
Estates and whatnot, we get, I know.
It's a big deal, especially coming from chief justice, to say that, recognize how difficult it was to have a functioning courthouse during two years of COVID restrictions. Huge, it was a huge overcoming.
And we also, I think, successfully kind of showed him some of the needs that we have, as Chief Justice Newby is pretty highly regarded within our state legislature, so hopefully, hopefully, Chief Justice Newby can help us with that process moving forward as well.
I said, that doesn't hurt a thing, right. All right, we are back to the playground that we discussed last month, and I asked the board to take a look at that and consider that, and I'm back again this evening. The contract we have for the relocation of that playground to property immediately on the opposite side of the health department, across from the parking lot of the street that serves the Hot Springs Health Program and the health department, on property that the county owns. And we do have a bid, which is still good through 8/31, for $24,478.89 for the complete removal of and relocation of that. So, at the pleasure of the, of the board, I would like to have a discussion on that. And so, Matt, I know that you attended the Board of Health meeting last week. We discussed that earlier.
Yep, I was, the Board of Health meeting that took place last week, and the Board of Health wanted to reiterate the fact that that playground equipment was purchased with grant money sought by the, by the Board of Health through the Triple P program, and that was, that was a grant that, that Triple P folks had some money left over at the end of the year and had to, it had to be allocated within a certain timeframe, and the Triple P people wanted to see that playground there, as do the members of the Board of Health. So, speaking as the commissioner liaison on behalf of the Board of Health, they would like to see it stay at the property adjacent to the health department, the new property that, that interim county manager Gentry has, has discussed. And me personally, as being the commissioner liaison on that board, I will, I will respect their wishes and pass that along to you guys. Also, on a side note, will say that my personal reservations were, by putting it there, were that it would potentially impact any future development that we had on that mountain or on that hillside there for other needs, county needs, for example, possibly administrative offices or a new courthouse at some point in time.
Sure.
In the future. And county manager Gentry has assured me that that would not interfere with any potential future instruct, construction on that, on that hill. So, both as myself, as county commissioner, and as the liaison for the Board of Health, I would move that we go ahead and move forward with the contract that is before us.
We have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second so we can go to discussion?
Second.
I now have a second. We're now in the discussion phase.
Point of discussion for me is, I think it is a two-way piece of property, and it's most likely will be needed for future development. We have no plan in place for this property, medical park drive, nor do we any long-term strategic planning for our long branch property. We ad hoc it as we go. So, we're, we've talked to at least two other private entities that have been interested in development here. We're looking at courthouse renovations and potential long-term courthouse and justice center project up here somewhere in the sheriff's office end, the health department end, so I think it's just too risky to, to put a playground there. My second, and I know, yeah, we can move it, I know how that works. Everything government's poured in concrete, so, plus, I think the Walin Barter community, it doesn't have anything. That part of the county has nothing, and I'm not going to get in a ownership contest with anyone about, well, I got this or I got that. To me, it's about the kids. We're trying to assist the town of Marshall with moving forward with creating better recreational facilities for their youth, and I think it's time we did something for folks in Walin Barter community. It would be a great one. There was concern about the cost of moving it out there. I have a mission team from various churches that are willing to donate their time, they're the same ones that put in the playground, the same company at Mars Hill, so they donate their time and services to dismantle and to move it. So, I'm opposed to putting it in an area where it's most likely going to have to be moved down the road anyway. I am in favor of doing something with it. It's a joke, it's ridiculous that we look at that, we spent money on it two or three times, and all it is a weed patch. It's a joke, it's a lack of planning.
Yes, Mr. Gentry? I move to the vote.
My, 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 my discussion is, and I appreciate and respect both my colleagues to my far right, is that I, I, I am, I am sick of looking at it. It has been there, it is, it reminds me of a relative that will, that comes to your house and won't leave. And we've, you've all got those relatives, I know you do, you just want to admit it. And, and, and I, every time I drive up by there, it reminds, it sings a little song to me about, you couldn't get this finished, you couldn't get this finished. So, I'm sick of it, and I'm, I'm also looking forward to getting it moved so we can do our celebration for our veterans' park. That's a big deal to me, as a veteran of the United States Army, that's a big deal. So, for me, let's call the vote, because I, you know, write this down, I'm gonna be with Commissioner Wexler when we give this one, so I'm gonna call the vote. There is a, there is a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor of moving it from said location to the behind of, to the behind, really, Craig? Oh, my.
Adjacent to.
All right, to adjacent to, all right, whatever, yeah, thank you, adjacent to. There, all in favor? Okay. So.
All opposed.
All opposed, sorry. And I respect your opinion.
Yep.
Tremendous.
I'm just tired of looking.
I hope the planning this time is far better than it was last time.
Yeah, I do, too.
Hope it's not, I hope it's done before I turn 80.
Hope it's done before I turn 80, that's closer.
And, and I would say this, I'm sitting in this chair tonight, is that I want, if we're gonna do it, let's don't get constipated, let's move the stupid thing.
The contractor will be notified first thing in the morning. All right, you gentlemen got some information from the school of government on an upcoming month-long capital financing program. I sent that out to you a couple of days ago. It's not urgent that we sign up for this, but this is for capital financing, and if members of this board would like to take that school of government, I intend to take it, Ross, and I've talked to a couple of others, we'll see about other folks taking it, but we've talked about capital financing, and this is the state course. So, please let me or Mandy know within the next few days if you do want to sign up for that course, okay?
How long is the course, sir?
It's a month long, I sent out the face sheet.
It's like five weeks, two days a week, Tuesday, Thursday.
Can you give me some minutes on it when you get done, because I'm not doing it for a month.
Yes.
I looked at my calendar, I'll say, it's so dense and you can't lay out.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a big commitment.
I can't do it for a month.
Yeah, I think it's Tuesdays and Thursdays.
It conflicts with my work schedule, otherwise, I'd be interested in doing it, but it.
Yeah, find me up, I'm, I'm, I've looked at my schedule.
You're good to go. Okay, Mandy, you got that?
That's my soccer schedule.
Okay, we're good. All right, moving down into the list of other things that we've got. You have before you the Center for Rural Health Innovation, the jail medical services contract for this year.
Now, you told everybody else to silence there.
I know, it behaves, it's, it's like me, it's not exactly well-preyed. You will notice that this has very modest increases in it. I was at the jail the day that the sheriff and staff and these folks, and we all met and discussed this, the rates in here do apply to the normal reimbursement rates, and based on the service that these folks have given and the prices in which they continue to provide service to the jail, the interim county manager would recommend the approval of the medical services agreement. This is the third amendment to that, and we, Donnie, you have.
This is the same form, it's the third iteration, all you've done is changed the substantive terms of it, so forms appropriate.
Having heard that from Commissioner Gentry, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve it.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I will say, I know that the staff at sheriff's office aggressively tried to barter that percentage down, so it was, it is what it is, it's a part of our responsibilities for providing care, and at least a lot of it's telehealth.
Keeping and moving them, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor?
The next item, gentlemen, is the 2223 Forest Service Contract that you have before you. Again, this is standard operating procedure. Donnie, also.
Same this one many times.
Yep.
Same form.
Yep.
Fuller play.
Yes, sir.
Is it negotiable?
Nope.
Nope.
So, basically, they're just asking for our permission to stick it through. Not saying that they're, not saying that they're, I don't, I don't mean to say that they're overcharging for their services, but, I mean, it's basically sign this or else, right?
Mr. Vice Chair, I make a motion we accept this, or agree to this Forest Service Contract for 2022 to 2023.
Thank you, sir, may I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you, Mr. Gentry.
All right, now, we have coming up next, changing of our board meeting. We have a resolution for the consideration of change in date for the month of September 22. The resolution will authorize the change in the meeting date from September the 13th to September the 19th. Also, the starting time will be changed from seven to six, and you have the resolution of changing that meeting schedule report.
Chairman, move, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
Andy? All right. Do we have anything on the lease?
Well, where we are on the lease, Mr. Chairman, is that you, for the courthouse leases, I think, last month, you approved two different leases, one for Mosea, which is the old bank building, that lease has been executed inside. The one for the old Roberts building across the street was a similar offer where you were offering for them to hold it and then do a, I think it was a 36-month long-term lease with them if we exercised the option. When Mr. Gentry went to the landowner, he was, I believe, reluctant to enter into the long-term lease part of that without having more information as to exactly what the renovations were going to be to his building, and, and the cost of doing that, because I don't believe the architects in AOC have come to a complete understanding as to exactly what that impact will be. So, he did not execute that lease, but rather said he would continue to hold the building. He did for the month of June, is it, or July?
June, July.
August.
And would hold it till the end of September.
And would hold it till the end of September for us to pay him a monthly rent just for that. In other words, he's not going to rent it out until we get the full study on that, and then he will review it at that time to determine whether or not he wants to tie his building up and then what the cost of that would be. So, I believe the offer now is, just instead of entering to a long-term, is it is your pleasure to enter into a short-term lease with him, just for the purposes of him holding the property and allowing us to go on it for the purposes of inspecting it and determining whether or not it would be appropriate for a long-term. Have I got that right?
You have got that correct, and he would agree to hold it through September, and hopefully, by then, we will have made a decision, and I think I can speak for all of us, Michael, we don't know if we're going to use it or not.
That's a fair statement.
And the cost of it on a monthly basis, I believe, is a thousand dollars.
Thank you for that update.
And just for the record, that's coming out of the money that was appropriated by the state for the courthouse renovation.
And it leaves us with no long-term obligation, leaves him. Fair enough. I would request we move to approve that, allow Donnie to.
If you would do that, I'll just modify the lease that we tendered to him to take out the long-term portion of it.
Motion to approve?
Motion.
A motion and a second on the floor, discussion?
Who's second?
Norris. I motioned.
Oh, you made a motion, I'm sorry, sorry, my bad.
Yeah, I was just helping.
No worries.
Discussion, all in favor?
All right, now, back to the fun part of the evening, which we always manage to seem to sort of kind of get out of, out of the box. We have before us the board vacancies that were prepared. We have had a couple of late inputs of information that I would recommend that we move to the September meeting to consider. So, what you have before us, we do have information from the Economic Development Board that the third gentleman on the top of this has requested, but we, as of yet, do not have an application for filling that position, third gentleman there on the list. So, what is the pleasure, beginning at the top of the animal control board?
I am the commissioner attached of that particular board, and you know, you know, everybody knows why. No, no joke needs to be made, as far as that. We all know how, how involved my wife is with animals in this county, and I, I have spoken to both those people, myself, Pia Cash and Alan Rayner for the animal patrol board. I'm just, I just went and said for somebody else did, so we're good, and I, I think these are, these are two people who have put their applications in, and would be good fits for that particular board.
The other two folks, just for the record, that are serving, they've met their term limits, so they cannot continue on.
Yes, sir.
Regardless.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we're, we're not, not trying to knock anybody off, I just need new blood.
Yep, and so you're making the motion for Pia Cash and Alan Rayner?
Yes, sir, I am.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
Is there a gavel? We can solve that problem.
I just turned it off.
We can blow Hillary Clinton on it, but we need to. I will say, there are other people in this room tonight who've had their phones seized.
Is that personal experience?
I'm not identifying anybody in the audience, so.
Say, is that personal experience? All right, moving on to the library board of trustees. Okay?
You skipped one.
Well, for the Economic Development Board, Brad, has, has it been conveyed to Mr., to Lee that he needs to get that application in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He's consented to serve again. I make a motion that he, based on the Economic Development Board's recommendation, he's already indicated that he will serve, and the fact he works in the public gas service industry, which is hugely beneficial, and he has a lot of other vast array of experience, we've accepted him without application before, and I make a motion to go ahead and put him... We've accepted him without application before, and I make a motion to go ahead and put him, reappoint him to that position. And I think we'll see several other people have put in as well, so glad to see a lot of people's interest in serving on these boards.
We will, however, make sure that that application is received as a matter of protocol.
Yeah, I agree, and that's fine. And knowing that that is the wishes of the Economic Development Board, because I was able to attend that last meeting, I'll second Commissioner.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Discussion?
City interests.
Any, any discussion? All in favor? Okay?
Sorry.
And we will come back to the email of earlier today, reference also to the Economic Development Board after we work through the others.
Okay.
All right.
Library, right? Library Board of Trustees?
Library is next. And it is the recommendation of the board, as they have done, that Barbara Merle and Anne Marie Watkins be recommended by the Library Board of Trustees.
You making it in the form of a motion, sir?
I am making that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion on form. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Also, I will recommend Will Hoffman to be reappointed to the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board as the education representative.
And if, correct me if I'm wrong on that, it's been years since I served on that board. It's been quite a while, actually. So, that is a spot specifically for a school representative. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I make a, a second.
All right. A motion and a second on the floor.
Sorry, I jumped the gun on discussion.
Motion and a, and a second. Discussion, gentlemen?
One, no.
All in favor? All right.
All right. The other item which had come to us, again, we, this is from the Economic Development Board at the last meeting, you gentlemen can chime in. The board has recommended the consideration of Ryan Cody to be appointed as the chair of that board.
That is correct. That was the wishes of the board unanimously at that meeting. So, I will make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
All right. Now, moving on to the last item that I have. In response to the Golden Leaf Award funding in the amount of $450,000 for the completion of a portion of the interior building modifications and renovations for the Spring Creek Community Center, a request for qualifications and engineering service committee was issued by the county. That posting expired 8/8/22, and there was one bid received of LS3P, which is the firm, which is now the successor to the folks who have been working on that. The bid review team, which consisted of staff and Elizabeth Lane and myself, we examined and worked through the form, and the proposal met all of the qualifications. And based on the qualifications being met, the review committee for that recommends unanimously that we grant that service agreement for engineering and architectural services to LS3P.
You're making that in the form of a motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that. You have a motion, second on the floor. Discussion?
I'll second. I'll, my discussion is I'll vote for it only if Scott will call me back on the courthouse project.
I will talk to him if he's not watching right there.
Nah, he's watching right now, Scott. I left you voicemail quite some time ago.
Yeah.
Okay. Noted, noted, Mr. Whit.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right. I do believe, Mr. Vice Chair, that that is all that I have. And now, we need to move to the one other amended item, which I was thought in mind, and that is I refer back to Commissioner Garrison.
Commissioner Whit, I believe, maybe?
I believe it was my apologies. He. I apologize.
But I, I just want to entertain just a brief conversation, and then we can make a decision at whatever point. I know there was conversation even tonight in public comment section regarding it. The, as far as how our, how we have directed, the board has directed Brad as to direct developmental services and also Terry Dolan as far as searching out, identifying, investigating, sanctioning with injunctions or abatement letters for junk, potential violations of it. So, I'd like for the board to entertain, and I talked with Brad about this as well, to make sure that we give much clearer guidelines. Reality of it is, I'm pretty sure, based on conversations, that everybody on this board, I think, would hopefully have at least some degree of consensus that, that we don't have the manpower allocation or the interest in putting Brad and Terry, our only two employees, in that particular aspect of the county department, to driving around all day long looking for somebody that has a junk car or that has trash in their backyard. My son reminded me today that if, I guess, if technically if you come to the house and saw his truck and my tractor and that Ford, that Steven that's got a three on the roof, we'd probably, they'd probably send us a letter, too. But, so, me personally, is to make sure that we not only give them clear direction because they suffer the brunt of it, it's also so that they're not out there overworked and overloaded trying to do what they perceive us, that we've directed them to do, i.e., just because you get a complaint, I'm not expecting, me personally, I'm not expecting Brad, Terry to go out there and start taking some type of action because somebody complained. And I, I've made kind of a hit list of things, and actually asked my family some things, if you were gonna investigate these things. Property rights, Scott would be the first to tell you, I am. At the same time, I don't want certain, I don't want a bunch of junk next door to me. There's reasons for that. So, the question is, where do we, how do we direct Brad and Terry as to what they enforce? Because, Donnie, I don't know the legals. I looked it up. I know that in law enforcement, we give them discretion, which means just because probably, especially tonight, probably 80% of you folks are gonna speed on the way home. I don't, I don't expect the Highway Patrol to write everybody a ticket or even stop you if you're doing 56 in a 55 mile an hour zone. Now, that's a, that's a letter of the law violation, Dr.
Yes, sir.
They have violated the letter of the law by driving one mile over speed limit. But the spirit of the law would say, that's not worth stopping. The spirit of the law says you're going way too fast, and you're posing a danger for yourself or others. And to me, that's how I, I look at enforcing ordinances, is that spirit of the law of it. And I'm, you know, the words, I'm looking for the, those most egregious, not just a neighbor complaining, because I'm gonna tell you, if we do that, we're gonna be busy. Because every time somebody gets mad at somebody and they complain, and then if I go to so-and-so's house, then they're gonna say, well, you need to go down to our soul. Well, that's a complaint. Now, now we're sending, Brad's not getting his work done, he's spending all day long chasing people's complaints.
Retaliation.
I'm looking at the egregious. And what I mean by egregious is outrageous, atrocious, shocking, awful, appalling, horrendous, deplorable violations. And so, I thought, what does that mean? How do we, how do we give Brad direction on that? And for me, there are times, and I believe people will be able to use their property, but there are times when that's just not acceptable. What, what's going on? And so, I, I missed it some. I'm gonna give you some examples of things I think the board, in the near future, ought to entertain before we start taking Brad and Terry on to have to go out to all these. And it's not one thing. To me, it's a culmination of things. Does it present a serious public safety hazard? Like the other day when I drove out a road for two and a half days, and this car was sitting in the road at three or four feet. Yeah, that's a problem. Does, is there, is, is glass all over the place? Is, is trash blowing all over the place? Does it pose a significant environmental health condition or concern? Is it leaking oil and antifreeze? Is sewer running all over the place? You know, does it create a significant environmental health consideration? Is there a substantial property devaluation consideration? That is so bad that everybody around their property has been devalued. I think, simply, they could probably sue them on it, but I think the county's also got some obligation to say, clean your stuff up. At least do this, this, and this. You know, do something. So, substantial devaluation in, in property values. Is it excessive? Not just is there a bag of trash or is there a junk car, but is there large excessive quantities of rubbish and debris, waste, garbage, or junk? Is it excessive? That should be one of those things we check. Is it a crucial detractor from economic development initiatives? Everybody around there's got commercial property they're trying to develop, and they can't because you've got this one spot that just is a huge detractor to drawing or to encourage economic development. Well, maybe that should be a checkbox. Is it incompatible with the surrounding existing development? In other words, that don't fit in the community. That's a great place for that, on, on that particular, looking at the area, so that might be a checkbox. And is there complaints? I think that is an A factor, but it's only one. That is it complaint-driven. Are we getting a lot of complaints? How many are we getting? How serious are the complaints? And then, even in all of that, to say that there's some degree of mediation and mitigation that can take place, saying, that is a violation of the junk ordinance, but I think if you had a fence or a berm or set a, 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 a hedge through there, that would probably be sufficient to put that checkbox off and to put that on the bottom of our to-do list. So, I think the board just needs to help Brad and Terry with better discernment of what our intentions are, what our wishes are.
Can I give you an example as a practical example?
Sure.
I came here in 2013 as county attorney, so I've been here nine years. You had land use ordinance at that time with all of these provisions in it. You had one, I think you had Mr. Cody as your zoning officer, and then you had, who was there before Danny? The one, there was one more gentleman, if there's been three, four folks there during that time. As far as code enforcement, that we had to go through legal action up until 2021. We had one case. One case of enforcement is all that we had, and that was the zoo case that we started in 2019, and that was so egregious that we, as a county, got a judgment against those folks for $55,000. And we just collected 30 of that, and we're gonna get the other 30 next month. One enforcement out of all of that time. And how did that come about? It came about because at a county commissioners' meeting, we had half of the community of Walnut Creek appear and say, you've got to do something about this because animals are running wild in their community, including wolfhounds and everything in the world. That's a good example of what I think you're talking about being egregious. Now, just think about that for, for 2013 to 2021. One deal. And, you know, that's the kind of enforcement that you're talking about under a, a, a ordinance. You know, anytime one neighbor calls another neighbor up and it becomes just a one-on-one or small things like that, the county does not have the ability to hire a team of investigators who all they're going to do is investigate those things. That's the purpose of an ordinance, is to try to stop the egregious activities that would result in huge fines if somebody does not comply. I mean, that's the best example I can give that come down in reality.
Well, I'm advocating that whatever we do, that we, that we, if it fits those criteria, you check off the boxes. I'm telling it publicly. If you're that person and you check off all those boxes, get in line. Fix it and get in line. You're talking to a person that respects property rights, but fix it. That being said, I think Mr. McCormick makes a very valid point in, at what point should we be actively governing the rights of other people's private property? And that's why this is, having this list of things that we look at. And I would go so far as to support for those that, if necessary, that we use some of our supplanted funds to bring them into compliance, if that's what it takes, to address these issues. Can we sleep again? Unfortunately, not. Maybe we can.
What happens if we do?
This ain't nothing, this ain't nothing y'all's business, what we have on our property.
Well, and I, and I think coming from my perspective, too, I don't, I don't disagree with you, sir, and I, I, I do agree that.
I don't live in a sub-.
I, I don't either. I live in Grapevine, on Saddle Mountain. And there, here's my thing. What I don't want somebody doing is going around snooping around, playing PI, looking around, seeing something that don't, don't fit with their, whatever they think is right and wrong. Because if you are, you're gonna have to take about half my neighborhood with you.
Well, that's what happened this time.
I understand. I understand. I, I can't, I can't, I can't have, I can't, I just gotta look at you and smile. I can't have no banter because my attorney will start throwing things at me. My point is, we, I, I agree with you, Chief. In no circumstances do I want people going out trying to do this and looking and smelling for something else as far as that. And I also would say, and if you've never had this, then God bless you. If you've never had the neighbor from hell, you're just lucky. Because I've had a neighbor from hell, and I will meet in Grapevine. I gotta go home tonight. There are lovely people out there. But I've had that neighbor. And I, my, my dogs bark, I was, I was Antichrist. Anything went wrong, it was, it was there. And I, and I, I'm telling you, it made my life hell for a while. So, I'm with you, Chief, on that. I don't wanna go too deep on it. But also, if you've done something on your property that's gonna keep me from getting to mine, I got an issue with that, too. There, there can't be a situation where we're gonna have to have a conversation. But I do agree 100%. It's your land. That's why I came. That's why I'm here. I don't, when I go home, I don't wanna see nobody but my dogs. I like them better than people anyhow. I'm just saying. That's what I, I like, I like the fact that if you came up to my house and you saw my purple Nissan truck, I guarantee you'd say that's a piece of work. But that's my truck. Don't even look at it, don't say nothing. Because that's what, I'm gonna keep that truck here. I mean, that's just the way it is. And I got, that's my property. So, for me, Mike, I agree with you. There's gotta be a process, so we need to give it to them in writing so they know what we want them to do.
I think, Donnie, brings a valid point. Most of this on this checklist, or a checklist, most of it's just not gonna rise to that, to the point of needing anything. It hasn't in the past, and it probably won't in the future. 99% of it is just not gonna rise to that occasion. And the 1%, we could probably break into compliance with a little bit of work. So, I'm not saying we take any action out, I'm just simply saying, before we take any actions, the county must develop a much more detailed process that requires a lot more egregious action.
I agree, and I appreciate your, your details because these tips into here that we're not, we're not looking over their shoulder, gonna put a camera looking on their property. That's not, that's, that's not gonna happen.
I can say it. You know, we all, this board, as Republicans and Democrats, we're all, I think, on the same page when it comes to the results of this.
Agreed. Thank you. Mr. Mr. Gentry?
We have a collective community responsibility, and that involves all of us acting responsibly. The bottom line here is that this board of commissioners and our employees are not out to get anybody. And it's been well said. And it's been well said by Michael and said by others, the overwhelming majority of people that live here respect their property and respect their neighbors. That's really what we're talking about here. We're talking about two or three other things that have come up from event venues, the noise that comes from that. We're talking about proper development so that water doesn't run off and roads aren't in a holy mess because we don't monitor somebody who builds 20 houses next door to your property. And as Michael well said, when somebody gets to the point that what they're doing on their property is dangerous to themselves or to somebody else, and in many cases, they really violate public health laws. Now, I'm old enough to remember when we pulled 3,800 straight pipes out of the creeks in Madison County. 3,800 straight pipes. I grew up in a house with a straight pipe. Now, you talk about controversy? When we told people, and the state and the government told people, "You've got to get your crap out of the creek."
Literally.
Now, we're not anywhere near that now. But we are all together on this, folks. We're not opposed to each other on this, and we all share a responsibility. And what I'm hoping will come out of this is that reasonable neighbors will help their unreasonable neighbors take care of things. And Michael made a good point too. If we've got somebody who needs help, we've got a trice situation right now, I'm not going to call it out, that we're going back out with solid waste for the third time to clean up the yard. Some of you may know exactly where that place is, I'm not going to call people out. Because the county is doing that. We are sending solid waste, dumpster, and staff to take that garbage off that person's property because it's a hazard to them and to everybody else. So let's all work together on this. And if you have a problem, please give us a call. Give us a call. You can find every one of us. I got a little notepad at the house. Many of you know where I live. I got a little notepad on the chase lounge under the carport and a little thing of pins. I'll guarantee you, when I go home tonight, there will be at least one note stuck on my sliding glass door. So if you've got a problem, call me or come by and see me. And the rest of us, the same way. Let's work on these things together. And by working on them together, we'll solve the problem without violating anybody's property rights, but by protecting those who somebody next door to them or down the street would run over them and bully them if you don't have just some common sense there to respect your neighbors. That's really what it's all about.
It's good to have public comment. I know for you folks, it's tough when you can't engage this part of the conversation because what's tough for us sometimes is to say, some of the things we've got to listen to during public comment, not respond. But the point of it is, at least, at least you have a voice. When you're here, whether we agree or disagree on whatever the topic is, at least people can take that microphone, spend three minutes, and educate us on their position. And that's what I love about this country.
And we are here, you. I hear you. I hear you.
And I didn't know Norris had a complaint box in his house. A note box. I'm grateful I don't have that at home because my wife and my daughter would fill it up.
Well, anytime Matt dates me about 24 hours a day, he just simply calls and tells.
So for those that are here, that this has been a point of concern, it'll be a prime opportunity to reach out to your commissioners, say, "Hey, look, I don't believe y'all come on people's property for anything. At least give us a little bit, some options when it's so bad that we're going to have to do something. Give us some of those check things that we should be looking for." I don't think there's any problem with giving us some input on it.
If it's not your property, well, the problem is looking another way, finding your own business.
And Norris's address, what's your address?
Everybody knows where I live. If you don't, just call me.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. It's come time now that we need to adjourn this meeting, and then we're going to go to recess, we're going back to a recess meeting for personnel. So I need a motion right to adjourn, is that correct? Do I just, are we going to adjourn this one?
And return to the previous meeting.
May I have a motion to adjourn? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? This meeting stands adjourned.
Chairman, we need a five-minute recess, and then we will reach on the other closed